All right, we can go ahead and get started. Evelyn, will you start us off with the ball call?
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee King.
Here.
Trustee Marquez.
Here.
Vice President Weekly.
Present.
President Will.
Here. Good evening. Tough act to follow there. Welcome to the June 11, 2025, meeting of the Redwood City School District Governing Board. Buenos notis de todas. Muchas gracias por compañones. Esperamos contar con su participación. Sírvare interpretación al español. Por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete. Y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno y el signo de numero. Si asiste a la reunión en persona, solicitando transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. And then this is our first meeting since the last day of school. So I just wanted to start us off by congratulating all the students and families for their accomplishments this year. Special congratulations to all the students that celebrated promotion ceremonies to middle school and graduation ceremonies to high schools. And of course, you know, congratulations and thank you to the office staff, the custodians, the transportation drivers, the maintenance teams, child nutrition, mental health, para educators, reading specialists, the teachers, community school coordinators, site admins, district staff, you know, really all the staff that just is so instrumental in seeing our students and families succeed. So thank you. Thank you all that work for the district and members of the public that are joining us. You know, you are our partners in education and the board encourages you to participate and provide comments on issues of concern. And regardless of whether they are on the agenda to speak, please complete a speaker's card online. If you are here or if you're here in person, you'll find them available at the entrance and then hand them to Evelyn. And if you're addressing a subject listed on the agenda, we'll call you at the time that that item is being considered. And if the issue is not on the agenda, you'll be called shortly during the oral communication agenda item that comes right after we approve the agenda. And of course, to be fair to all speakers, we limit comments to three minutes per person, per topic, unless it's otherwise noted. And so with that, do we have any changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay, then let's go ahead and we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, agenda approved. And we will move on to public comment, which I forgot to open. Evelyn, maybe you have it open and can tell me if. Okay. Is this for agenda number? Oh, it's for public. Okay, great. Then we will start with Maria Stockton. And if you wouldn't, if you turn on the microphone, it's the person with the, yeah.
Apologize. Hi there, Maria Stockton, Redwood City Five Chapter President. First, I, all day I was so happy to come and talk to you. And then something happened. I'm not so happy. So I'm going to try and get over this. I'm sorry. But first, I want to tell you how delightful it was for us to go over to the schools Thursday and Friday. Our representatives from CSCA to give five of eight graduate, five of eight of graduating students from eighth grade. It was a hundred dollar scholarship. Our people loved doing it. It was put, the names were given by the principals and the reasons. And so it was a delight and we are hoping and really working toward making this happen again next year. So we're really happy. So the other thing that may be upset is we are working very, very hard to settle issues in this school district. We respect the district. We expect to be respected. And it's very hard for us to have meetings when we don't feel, we don't feel respected by this district. We set meetings. We come here and we are told that the meetings are online. And it's very disrespectful when we know there are people in this district behind closed doors on their computers instead of down here speaking face to face with us. It really makes us feel that this negotiations of whatever we do and trying to deal fairly with the district is not being recognized. And so we would like things to change. It's hard enough. You have an HR director that lives out of the town. We have to work our schedules for her to be here if she's here. But the other people on your team are here in this office. And when we go upstairs and we see they're here, when they should have been down here, we feel is a waste of time and it is not good negotiations. We would hope that to improve, please. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Maria. Let's move on to bond, let's see, oral communication does no program consent items. So we'll move on to bond program action items. And our first item is 7.1 adoption of the final facilities master plan.
Evening, members of the board. Tonight I'll welcome Aaron Jobson from QKA back to discuss the final version of the facilities master plan as well as what's happened with the plan since the last time it was presented to the board a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'll hand it over to Aaron. Thanks, Rick. I'm just going to share the master plan documents successfully. All right. So just a quick kind of process overview to start since we met last time, which I think was just two weeks ago, right? We, we did some work to incorporate comments we got from you. We also got some additional comments from some of the school site leaders. So we made a few changes to the document based on that. Not a lot of changes, really adjusted a few IQ scores based on some feedback from you guys on, on the, for the charter schools specifically, made a few tweaks to some of the relatively minor adjustments to some of the plans based on feedback from a couple of the principals. And, and then, and you know, kind of crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, kind of a few corrections here and there to fix a few errors that we had noticed. And then late last week, we published the updated draft for, for today that we're reviewing today. And then the goal here is hopefully to get your approval on that tonight. And then we'll publish the final draft. And there may be a few things that we need to incorporate between now and then, which is, which is totally fine. There's a couple of minor corrections we noted already. And if there are additional comments or things like that today, we can kind of take those as part of the approval and incorporate them into the final kind of approved draft that we would then publish, you know, late this week or early next week. So just kind of overview, that's what we're, we're talking about. We got a few comments even yesterday that we're, that we're already working on and that we can incorporate into this and have the relatively simple to address so that we feel like we can do that without changing materially the document or anything like that. So that's all part of the process we've been through for the last nine months, I guess, at this point. And really kind of trying to have as much engagement in this process and with the community as possible to make sure that we're reflecting the broadest possible sense, the needs of the community and the desires of the community for what's most important to improve the educational experience and really how to best use each dollar the district has to benefit education. So that's kind of overall where we are. We've, we've been through this document a number of times, so I'm happy to take any questions or look at anything you want to look at. We have the whole document here and I'll make any, any kind of comments and notes on, on it that, that we come up with today, but I think I wasn't planning to kind of formally present any parts of it today.
Thank you. And then just to confirm, because I, I think this is what you said, and I did not notice anything that was materially different between the last time we reviewed it. But it sounds like what you're saying is there are no real material changes, some, some suggestions rolled in, but nothing really significant to the suggested plans or what would happen in each site.
Correct. Yeah, I think there were a few, you know, kind of moving, make this classroom pre-K and this classroom, you know, TK and then some of the relatively minor changes, but didn't change like the scope of projects. Were able to do that, accommodate those, most of the comments that we got by doing that without having significant changes.
Right. And of course, the details, we won't know until we actually.
We're at the top level and we'll get into a lot more detail on all these things as we go forward.
Kind of the big boxes, not the, not the little ones. Okay. Do any of the trustees have anything they'd like to discuss, comment on, or ask questions about? This is our third time reviewing the plans, so I think that that's not too surprising. And then, Rick, I couldn't quite tell if you had anything that you wanted to add. You were kind of looking. I wasn't sure if you had a comment you wanted to make or not.
No comment on that reason, but happy with the document, knowing that it's a living document. Yeah, but subject to modification as we move forward and as we identify, plan and identify future projects that can come back or amendments or additions or deletions. And thanks to Aaron and the QKA team for the work on this.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think one of the things, one of the things we talked about, we talked about today, Rick, was, is just the, the context that, you know, this document is based on a set of assumptions and information that we have now. And it's the best, just choices that we can make based on information. And as that information changes in the future, it's expected that the document will be revised. It's required by Prop Two that you update the master plan every five years. So that's kind of a good benchmark to use as a cycle. But if something significant changes before then and you want to update it sooner than that, you know, that's easy enough to do as well.
Yeah. And that's a really good reminder because I feel like there were flavors of questions that had come up around, well, what if this scenario happens three years from now? Have you locked your, you know, and of course not, you can come back and revise it. So that's a good year.
Classic example, that is, if we were to look back five, six years ago, then all of a sudden we're adding TK. That's a pretty big change in context.
Yeah.
So that requires updating a whole bunch of master plans and we don't expect necessarily something that significant in the near future, but enrollment trends obviously are the kind of most obvious thing that can change and, and require revisions, whether that's just to one part of one school or, you know, more than that.
Yeah. Okay. I agree with Rick. Thank you for the, the work that's been gone in here. And for the engagement with the board coming to our meetings and sort of answering all our questions and the engagement with the community at the two school sites, the, the actual, this community meetings at the two school sites, the one online and then numerous, I don't know actually how many times you went and met at the school sites themselves to be able to pull the information. So.
At least two at each school. So I'm not sure what that adds up to in total, but.
Over 20. So that's a good enough. Okay. So this is, this is an action. Yes, this is an action item. And so we'll need a vote to approve. Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to adopt the facility master plan.
And is there a second? All in favor? Aye.
Yes. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you all and look forward to working more in the future.
Likewise. Okay. Our next item is 7.2, which is the approval of the Siemens Building Management System for the mechanical controls for the school sites getting to track, Rick.
Yeah. And I'd like to invite Nicholson up from VPCS, our bond program manager, and Martin Cervantes, who we all know, to talk about the Siemens Building Management System.
Thank you for that introduction, Rick. Good evening, members of the board. So 7.2 is the recommended approval of the Siemens Building Management System specifically for the mechanical controls for this summer's four campuses where we're replacing and upgrading the HVAC. So just as a reminder, that's Hoover, Taft, Roosevelt, and Adelante Selby. The reason that we're recommending Siemens is because the district actually standardized with Siemens Building Management Control a while back. So we want, wanted to continue that for ease of maintenance and consistency. So that was what was specified in the project. The reason that we're recommending contracting with them directly is so that we can take advantage of the cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell to get us the best price for the scope. So we're happy to take any questions, but the recommendation is to approve this contract receipt.
All right. Thank you. Do, do anyone have questions or comments? Okay. The one, the one question I had is for this one, and it kind of relates to the next one, Rick. And I think we had talked about this once before, but I mean, I joined Measure T way down through the implementation process and there was kind of a detailed budgeting process around it to be able to track it. With only like one or two projects going on, it's pretty easy to kind of keep it, you know, float. But when, when do you think we'll move into that kind of, here it is, you know, here's the contingency, here's the board reserve, here's the budget and the moving of transferring of funds between projects and et cetera.
Yeah. So we're still, we're finalizing the implementation of the financial system for Measure S. And we're starting to get, I'll say valid reports out of that where we'll be able to present those to the board on a regular basis.
Okay, great. Yeah. I keep asking like, what's the budget? I can't remember. So it's been, it's been helpful. Okay.
We'll be able to include that person as well with specific projects as they come back for discussion or updates.
Okay, great. Perfect. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve 7.2.
And is there a second? All in favor? Perfect. Okay, then 7.3 is the guaranteed maximum price amendment for the lease with block instructions for the HVAC updates going in this summer.
I'll just turn it over to Nick and Martin again.
Yeah, thank you. 7.3, as you said, is recommended approval of the GMP for block construction. If you recall, at the May 14 meeting, the board approved the lease leaseback contract with block construction to kick off the pre-construction portion of that work. That started our subcontractor bidding period. So we went through a whole collaborative process with block to, for the pre-approved subcontractors to bid and they're pre-approved based on prior experience, ability to meet the contracts or schedule. And so we did an open book competitive process. We got good bid coverage. I think we got really competitive bids. So now this is all the rest of the scope outside of the controls. Remember, we pre-ordered the actual mechanical units. And if the board approves tonight, we would spend the next couple of days getting bonds and insurance and all that in place and actual, start actual construction on Monday. So that's the hope. I also wanted to note that this also includes some contingencies for possible unforeseen's because this is a modernization project. And it includes the scope to install the temporary air conditioning units that we delivered to all the other schools that'll happen over the summer. So in both cases, the goal is to be ready for students and staff to come back in August.
Great. Sounds good. Does anyone have questions or comments? Nope. Okay. Well, thank you for locking in the GMP before, or right as summer is starting. It was a tight timeline and so I appreciate everyone's diligence in getting that in there. And I know that it's a tight timeline between now and when school starts in August, but I think it's going to make a tremendous difference because even though we've had a very temperate May and most of June, you know, we've seen historically how August and September can just be such hot months. So I'm excited to see all this work kind of land over the next few weeks. Can we get a motion to approve? I move to approve. Is there a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we're on to 8.1, which is the discussion of the board meeting calendar for the 25, 26 school year. Is there preamble for this or should we just get right into our discussion?
We get right into discussion.
Okay, you all see it in front of you. I am going to actually kick off the discussion because I have a request at the very top of the, of the schedule there. August 13th for me personally would be amazing if we were willing to move that to the 20th. If that works for other people, I have a personal commitment the next day. And that would prevent me from having to catch a midnight flight to make it to my nephew's wedding as opposed to being able to catch an earlier flight.
20th is music in the park at which my wife is performing. So I would prefer if we made it like maybe Tuesday, the 19th would work or Thursday, the 21st or.
Can we?
We are able to change it if we do it a prior weeks ahead of time, which we are doing right now. So we can.
August 6th, just to keep.
Did you want, did you want to?
Keep it consistent on a Wednesday?
I'm gonna be gone August.
Oh, you're gonna be gone August 6th. Okay. Then 19.
What about the others?
And August 6th, by the way, there's this feedback meeting, but we could move that one.
Oh.
Yeah. I think.
The, the, yes, we, we talked about, it's the 12th. I need to check. I still need to check with Mr. Weekly.
Yeah.
Yeah. August 12th works.
So we are.
The other thing I wanted to point out about the 13th that I forgot is first day of school, right?
It's the first day.
Yeah. And so while obviously school is not going on at seven o'clock at night, I'm sure everyone here is going to have a very exciting and vigorous day and would.
We're running around at different schools.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think the normal people that come to attend and participate might appreciate having a free evening that evening as well.
But now.
But I selfishly started this for me, just to be clear.
So what works for?
Can you turn the microphone on?
The 19th is fine. The Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay.
August 19.
Do you say?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Discussion.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say any others.
Yeah, any others that. See, I'm just checking my calendar for August 19th.
27th. That looks good.
Yeah, I'm here.
September 10th. That looks good.
At some point, the calendar is too far out to know if it's really good or not. So.
17th, I probably can't make. September 17th?
Okay.
I could do literally the next day or the next week, the 24th.
Yeah, I think the September, the September run holidays, I can't remember.
We do have Rasha Shana.
Yeah.
The 22nd through the 25th of September.
Right. Got it. But yeah, if we were able to bump the 17th to the 18th and do that on a Thursday night, that would.
I probably also cannot make any, any time that week, honestly.
Oh. But we can't punt it to the next week because of Rasha Shana. Yeah. Okay.
That's stupid.
September. Yep, September 30th or October 1st. Yeah, October 1st is wide open for me. That'd be no problem at all. But then we have one right on the 8th.
There's also a visitor attachment that kind of like.
Oh, yeah.
It makes it a little easier to see.
Oh, here we go. Oh, yes. Perfect. Thank you. Okay.
Now I'm in Evelyn mode. I got my three screens.
Yes. They're highlighted in green squares.
Yeah, I think that September to early October are kind of challenging.
Okay. Well, we can keep the 17th, but there's a very good chance I just can't make that then.
Okay. I mean, it might be better to do the 18th. I can't make either of those, but if it increases the likelihood of you being there, then any quorum issues are probably mitigated.
Can we move it to Thursday, the 18th?
What's on the district calendar? Can we look and see?
On the 18th and the district calendar, the only thing that is happening at that time or the parent teacher conferences during that week. So we could move to the 18th.
Okay. And you'll double check all these to make sure that something else scheduled for that night. Okay.
I mean, there are probably things at school sites and.
Right, right. All right. I think everything else after that is probably like too hard to say for sure. So maybe just keep. Yeah. Yeah. I think that's about right. Okay. So it sounds like we've got two changes in here, one for the August 19th for the first meeting and September 18th for that week instead of the 17th. Okay. Any other items to discuss? On the, this topic. Yeah. Okay. All right. Then more items to discuss. We're going to move on to 8.2, which is the first reading and discussion of board policy 1250. This is about visitors and outsiders.
It's windy.
Thank you. So there are a few board policies and ARs coming to you tonight. This is the first one as a update from a current policy that we have with stronger language in about a new concept called a registration where essentially a visitor would come in and need to show documentation that's listed out in the ARs. Visitors tend to be, because there were some good questions about that, somebody dropping off something for their child but not staying, a guest speaker for an assembly, a salesperson that walks up to the school and we turn them away. So there's a variety of opportunities where somebody comes to literally visit the school, but not, isn't necessarily intending to say and is certainly not considered a volunteer. So those are two different distinctions. We have separate board policy on volunteers. So that is one piece of it. That would, that is going to require staff training because that would be newer than what we've experienced. Certainly when we have a parent that might come or is familiar on a regular basis, we would of course check, but then there would be an ongoing acceptance of that person. But certainly for, for people that are not familiar and non-regular people, this process would definitely be in place. So that would require training. The other piece is the portion about when a registered sex offender is requesting to be on campus. So that certainly is a piece that CSBA stated. And of course, board policy reviewed this a few months back. And then CSBA also, you know, obviously contributed to it, which came to these updates. So the BP and the AR, are there any questions regarding this particular one?
I had just one question about the proof of identity. You know, it totally wasn't clear to me from the language either, but it sounds like it shifted from a could provide to must provide proof of identity. And then are like, is that going to be a bear? Like what if someone doesn't, what are the forms of identity that they have to provide? And what if someone doesn't have that?
Photo identification with their name on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be like a driver's license or a government issued one.
Those would be preferred, but we're going to have to verify it. Because what we don't want is somebody that we don't accept on campus or have some other reason. Interestingly enough, this is done all the time right now. It's just the level of scrutiny is being increased here. So we would expect to see identification. So all of this will be communicated out.
Okay.
In the first day packets and the communication, the early August communication from the principal.
Okay.
It might be bumpy along the way, especially when somebody just walks in and isn't expecting that, but that's typical when we're rolling out something. So.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just wouldn't want it to be accidentally exclusive to some families and some members of the community.
Yes. I think as a school district in general, our employees are conservative when it comes to strangers on campus. We really want to make sure students are safe. It's part of our comprehensive safety plan in general. So we got, we're going to have to take that into account, but the identification is an important part of this updated policy.
Okay. Anyone else have questions, comments? Okay.
Only building off of yours. Obviously you mentioned there's going to be staff training on, on this. Will there also be similar community sort of communication on this specifically with families knowing that they need to have this if they're to visit or, or anyone else like that?
Yes, that would go out in the first day packet. It's, and the before school starts, welcome to certainly the school community where it might be new to people that are walking in off the street. That, that's just something we're going to have to adapt to. Because we wouldn't typically advertise that in a city of Redwood City.
In the city, but what we will do, David, is we will definitely in the welcome announcement that is, we'll put all these new board policies and a summary of what is required. But as you said, to the Redwood City public as a whole, what I can have Jorge do is on the website, new policies to, you know, be aware of. And there's like a star that flashes off and on. I could do that so that everyone who gets on the website, even if they're not appearing in our school district, but want to learn more about it, could see that.
That, that sounds great. Obviously, you know, we'll work through the problems, but that sounds like a great plan.
Okay, I'll say it three times, but thank you, staff and policy committee for, you know, for reviewing the policies here. The one I like about this is that I think a clear process always is going to, you know, help everybody know what to expect, be able to get into that. So I think that's good. Let's move on to 8.3, which is the first reading discussion of VP 5131.8, the mobile communication devices. We do have two public speakers, so I'm going to have Wendy, if you want to do an introduction first, and then we'll have the comments.
Sure. So thank you so much for tonight. With this particular board policy has a little bit of a story that goes with it. Besides other policies, but we do have a new law. So first of all, we have had our mobile device, mobile communications actually, board policy in effect, but there was an update back in September through AB 3216, and it's called pupils' use of smartphones. And essentially what the law is stating is that by July 1st, 2026, the board needs to instate a policy and review every five years, the use of smartphones and smartwatches, smart devices that students bring to school. And the law through AB 3216 also outlines that really the board needs to decide about how phones will be used or not used. So it's encouraged. really the board needs to decide about how phones will be used or not used. So it's encouraging certainly not having cellphone usage at school and except for a, a certain group of, of students that fit in four different situations. One is in case of emergency, a student could have access to a smartphone when a teacher or administrator uh, gives permission to possess one in a certain situation, or when a licensed physician or surgeon determines that the possession is necessary for health or wellbeing. And then when the possession is required in a student's IP, so those would be the exceptions to this. So in processing through this information, um, Dr. Baker gave us direction, uh, to staff and then eventually the board policy committee to look at the law and really gain stakeholder input, which is part of what the law requires as well. So a survey went out. It was quite comprehensive. Uh, some of the highlights of the survey, which is attached to the board, uh, memo here, so you can, those in the public can also view it because there's quite a bit of data in here about what parents, um, noted regarding cellphone usage, what staff noted and what students noted. So we had about, uh, one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four responses to the survey spanning all grade levels. So we recognize that, well, we don't want to assume, but it's the issues tend to occur, um, really in primary grades. Our TK, um, doesn't have so much of this. However, uh, the cellphone use at school was something that was really, we were inquiring about why parents, why staff, why students felt it was important? How was it being used? Um, were students and teachers abiding by and enforcing the rules that we currently have in place with cell, cellphone, um, policies and so forth? So it was interesting to know that the two primary pieces of importance for parents certainly was that they really wanted to make sure that they could communicate. Um, like the coordination of drop off and pickup was one of the top items, but the reasons why the students needed cellphone service and a device and safety, safety being the number one item. Um, and, you know, we as a school district still have phones in classrooms, phones in the offices. So prior to cellphones, that was really the source of communication. I recognize with school shootings and some unfortunate incidences that really increased the desire for parents to want to be in contact. But certainly this law is supporting that we've sort of come to a point in schools where these cellphone devices and their usage is becoming really a distraction to learning. And the law outlines that as well. And so really what we did in this policy committee is to think through what processes we already have in place. We presented this information to a group of parents in Spanish and in English and, and walked through all of the items through the survey and really came to the realization that our schools are doing the, handling cellphone collection pretty well. It's a little bumpy. MIT and Kennedy, um, have larger middle school situations, certainly with MIT just rolling it out recently. That's been pretty bumpy. But there are processes in place to have students either have phones off in their backpacks or they're actually physically collected and then returned at the end of the day. There was one item that we had, that we noted in our slide deck, um, a yonder pouch. It happens to be just one brand where a student essentially checks it in and then checks it out at the end of the day. It's also coordinated with after school program, so they're involved with this process as well. So in, on one hand, we felt like we were in pretty good shape with this, the information with the law. But it was nice in the board policy committee because we really discussed and, and feel free, Jennifer and David, to pipe in here that, um, we, we appreciated the parents', uh, contributions about the concerns of cellphones either never being used in school, not being used during instructional time, or only being used during breaks, which would actually be very difficult to manage if you think about it. The other concern that had popped up, um, was that in the primary grades, there was usage of games and, and not socializing, not running out and playing at recess, just kind of being on your watch or on your phone, so to speak, wasn't really what our desires were for socialization and collaboration in, with students. Um, we also heard from a, a nice guest speaker who happened to be in the audience tonight, um, who spoke really about, um, how this can sort of be har- harmful socially. There's some safety concerns and so forth. So it was a really nice discussion, I thought, uh, of this stakeholder group that, um, was on this call. And so with all of that information and after that whole process was complete, the board policy committee met, took all of that into account. And that is how we arrived at this updated board policy and ARs that are presented to you tonight. So we are here for a discussion.
Perfect.
Uh, and oh, one more item I'd like to add. I'm sorry. I do want us to be very clear that this is, um, part one. We are, uh, presenting this to you as an update. But as we progress along the year, Dr. Baker really wants us to watch and listen and learn to find out if anything else needs to be modified. Because as I mentioned, it actually goes into effect July first, twenty twenty six. We're doing this somewhat early, but we'd like to get sort of all the kinks, all the issues worked out. Uh, making sure we're fully communicating to everybody. Um, the principals reacted pretty well to this. We had them fill out a Google form. Is it working? Is it not working? What are your weekly concerns with cellphones? It was very minimal, except for our two middle schools that still see about five issues a week pop up. And part of the problem is students not turning in their phones, not putting their phones in their backpacks, um, or saying, I don't have one. Which is dishonest, but so those are some things we need to work out through our communication with parents, really. You know, we always believe parents are partners, but wanting to make sure that that is solidified maybe more than it has been in the past, sending out information, um, and the reinforcement of the rules, uh, that are in place at the school with the staff, right? So we're, we're sort of upping our game a little bit, but knowing that this is somewhat of a pilot year to work out these things. So it may come to you again next year, once we learn new things about this process.
Sounds good. And we do have two speakers, one in the audience. So we'll start there with Mercedes Kuyakowski. Uh, there's a button on the left that looks like a person and the light will turn red. Perfect. You got it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, and you'll have three minutes, which you'll see up on the TV screen.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
I'm on. Okay. It's so good to see you all in person. I'm Mercedes. I'm a child psychiatrist. I think I've emailed all of you. I'm also a parent of two middle schoolers in the district, so this is like a daily conversation. So feels very relevant to me. I really appreciate the proactiveness that we're taking with this. I think a pilot's great. Now you have all this great data that we can compare to after you've implemented some things. Um, I've shared a lot. I think the focus for me would be on the safety piece because I think as a parent, as staff, teachers, everyone, we shouldn't have to worry about that, but it is a daily concern we have when we drop our kids off. I think just keeping in mind, there's some growing data that actually having access to these devices can make the classroom less safe. Um, and some of the arguments there is that it can be a distraction. If the students are texting their parents, they might miss crucial information of where they're going to hide or what they need to be doing. So that would be important. And also if it buzzes or beeps or something, that could draw attention to where the students are located. Um, there's been some situations where it's actually spread rumors that have interfered with, um, the safety personnel's ability to do what they need to do. And then also parents, we are wonderful, but also sometimes our anxiety gets in our own way because then we show up on campus and that has actually gotten in the way of, um, safety personnel trying to do what they need to do to respond in the moment. So those are just things I think to keep in mind. Um, and that is also a hopefully theoretical risk, whereas we have a lot of data about the daily harm that having these phones out is causing to our students. Really quickly, you know, I, I can, I've gathered some information for you that in schools where smartphone bans are in place, first of all, the students are so grateful, actually. After about the month of withdrawal, they are telling their families like, we're so glad that we don't have to be in this constant struggle and that the school is deciding for us. And then we can just be free to be present and engaged. And there's not this like, who's on their phone, who's not, who's listening to music, whatever. Um, there's also evidence that there's an improvement in grades when these phones are, you know, not available. And that actually is significantly a reduction in the education achievement gap. So they find those improvement in scores and grades are specifically with the kids lower SES or, you know, learning differences. Um, there's actually one study that showed that banning phones was the equivalent to an additional hour a week in school of learning or five extra days per year. So I mean, like, that's really impressive that we can get students engaged that much more. Um, there's also increase in engagement in the classroom, physical activity. And I think we all know, you know, you a- addressed this, but cellphones are not only a distraction, they aid in cheating. I've heard about it for my own thirteen year old. Um, they can be used to violate privacy and there is some data that there's increase in cyberbullying. So I really appreciate that we're even talking about it. I know it's a really nuanced issue. So thank you so much.
Thank you Mercedes and perfect, um, and for providing that information and of course, being engaged in the whole process. Um, our next speaker is online on Zoom. It's Wyatt Hammond.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. And you'll have three minutes as well, Wyatt.
All right, terrific. Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time to, to talk about this as well. As a general statement, I'll say that I, I agree that cellphone use and access should be limited or, or essentially banned during class and learning times, um, pockets, you know, on the door, similar to how the high school operates. I think these are good ideas. I agree with the last speaker in a, in a lot of ways. Um, I struggled a little bit with the questionnaire because, um, what we, what we provide our middle school age daughter is a smartwatch, um, that we enable the school time function on. And we give her the watch for multiple reasons, but we live a couple of miles away from the school at Roy Cloud. We're at the bottom of the hill down in the flat area. Um, there's no good way to get here from there. There's, uh, no sidewalks down Jefferson. It's not safe for riding a bike. Her backpack weighs probably thirty pounds or more with the books and the computer and everything else in it. So we utilize program called hop skip drive to get her home. Um, and, and the smartwatch is how she's able to know that her driver's there or not there. And if, if not there, um, she has to figure out her, her plan B, plan C options on what she's going to do and how she's going to get home. She is a rising seventh grader. We actually kept her in, uh, kids' corner. She was the oldest kid by probably two grades. Um, but we, we just don't have a good way to get her down the hill, um, until we, we came into this. So again, a lot of the questions were really like cellphone related, in my opinion. Um, and I agree with, with, with a lot of those limits, as I said. Um, but I want to talk about, or I, I just wanted to share this concern or this need. Um, in addition to the safety and, and, and the school shooting issues that were, that we hate to talk about and are, and are also gravely concerned about. But, um, you know, that is why we give her a watch is we don't want her easily chatting, doing games. And, and I realize a watch does enable a lot of those things, but it also, uh, we shut it down with the school time. So I don't know if there's a way that the conversation can kind of bifurcate a little bit along those two technologies.
Okay, thank you, Wyatt. Uh, thanks for sharing your perspective there. Um, let's open this up to the board for discussion. Does anyone have, uh, comments, questions, or something to start off with? David, David Weekly.
Yeah, so I mean, I think Wyatt speaks a lot of my mind that I feel like the, when it comes to phones and if we were to consider smartphones in particular, the evidence is pretty overwhelming, right? And so, and that, that's actually the language that was used in AB three twenty sixteen was explicitly about smartphones. And they didn't actually consider in that bill, other kinds of communication devices, which are, our board policy here does kind of lump together those two things. So I, I feel like it would be interesting to tease that apart and to almost have separate conversations about smartphones and what our policies are there. And I think, you know, yonder pouches seem like a pretty reasonable take in terms of what to do there. I think I'd, I'd be very supportive of going that direction. Where I feel more on the fence is about smartwatches, that a lot of the parental concerns about being able to contact, uh, their kid, be able to know where they are, be able to have the kid be able to call them. Makes sense to me. And at the same time, like, it's a lot less distracting. There's a lot less surface area. Games are not super fun to play on a screen this small. I can't really watch cool videos on something this small. Uh, you can't take pictures, right? So privacy violations have become a lot smaller. That said, it could turn out that on, a- after review, after research, like, we really do need to crack down, um, on smartwatches and maybe even put them in the same category as smartphones, but I feel like it's nuanced enough that it deserves a different discussion. And I do feel like both the poll and the language of the board policy that's put in front of us right now, um, consider them as equals and, and sort of lump them together. And, and I, I feel like that's not right. So I, I feel like we ought to have a discussion that's a little bit more nuanced about, uh, watches with cellular versus smartphones.
All right, uh, David Lee, you look like you're ready to jump in.
Yeah, I, I think part of my concern with teasing these things out is that I think the way it's intentionally phrased is to capture the possibility of additional devices coming in. And I little concerned about having the need to add another policy each time. So for example, if we don't have a policy, if we limit to phones and smartwatches, then if there's like the smart glasses, for example, we need other policy continuously and technology is obviously continuing to evolve. When I think really the concern is, we understand that there are techno- technology, technology devices that are causing distractions as well as other issues that have been mentioned. And in the case of the, um, of what Wyatt just mentioned, I actually think that that would be permitted under this policy under one of the exceptions, number two. Right? So I, I would think that we want to be flexible in understanding what the use cases are specifically for the exceptions. But I think the intention of the way that we shape this policy as proposed is to make clear that there's a strong default against um, these sorts of devices while still living, leaving some flexibility. So for, for discussion.
May I add one item?
Yeah, who's Wendy?
So, um, just in honoring Wyatt's comments to the idea, uh, should smartwatches be included or any other technology advice that comes to be? Because the, the board policy is mobile communication, communicating with assumingly some device outward um, or inward or texting or what have you. But if we are holding true to what we are doing, a cellphone and a smartwatch or, or glasses or anything else that comes to be would still be collected, held, and then returned at the end of the day so that the transportation at home and so forth going home would help. I recognize that doesn't solve the school shooter situation, although we do have practices and safety plans and so forth in, in place for that. But to that point, I think the idea would be to collect in the morning and then return when the child would leave whatever comes to school. That would be considered a mobile communication device.
One point of clarification. I, I thought, uh, at least in my initial thinking about the, the policy, it was that could, that could be one of the ways in which that this is enforced, right? The daily collection through whatever. I, I thought we also wanted to leave room for the possibility of, um, of administrators to determine whether or not that is the most appropriate enforcement mechanism or if there are other ways. So I I think I had understood that there are some elementary schools that currently have kind of a self enforcement policy and they don't seem to have the same issues, but.
Yes, so I correct myself. Either collection or in your backpack.
Okay.
With the trust, the trust that you're not going to take it out during the school hours. The elementary grades seem, the principals seem to be okay with that. These, it seems to be working. The kids are listening to the rules, so to speak, from what we understand. I think there might be a little bit more scrutiny, certainly as we go forward in this next year of our pilot. Um, and once again, the communication, more training, reminders of rules, but in general for the elementary school, the collection or excuse me, the put it away in your backpack and then take it out after school is working. I think for the upper grades, maybe upper elementary possibly, or even, uh, middle school, certainly middle school. The collection is a better way to go. That's what they've been doing at least. Yeah, thank you for that.
But Wendy, I think when we got the feedback from the principals and correct me if I remember this incorrectly. We saw in the, in the elementary schools, everyone is putting their watches in the backpack, but were they being collected in the middle schools? It was just phones, right?
Right, so it, right now it's just phones.
So they still, the middle schools still have their watch on them.
We have three schools that are using yonder, but the other schools are using other two schools, all right, using yonder, but still a collection method, whether it's in a bin in the office. Um, the high schools, I, I think as the speaker mentioned, have almost like a sh- a hanging shoe rack with a number and you have a student number and you go and you just put your phone in. But, and that might work for sort of a self-contained situation, but when you have kids moving from class to class, that might be difficult. But anyway, be that as it may, the collection process is, is in place now at the middle school level.
And then I just wanted, I guess there's two things that I wanted to clarify. Um, the pickup, i- it sounds like the student's gonna have their devices back at pickup time. The pickup, it it sounds like the student's going to have their devices back at pickup time. And so if that is to be used for coordination, which we saw in the survey results or we heard from our speaker tonight, that shouldn't be impeded by this policy. It's really about what's happening during the school day. And they should be able to coordinate with their ride down down the hill in this case, or their parent pickup if they're around the corner or whatever.
Correct. So it would be what it would look like and what it looks like now in these situations is a student walks into school. They go to that identified location to drop off their device. They drop it off. At the end of the day of the school day, when the last period is over, they pick it up or the device goes to the after school program who collects it. The adults in the after school program, and then they disperse it when the child leaves at the end, end of the day, six o'clock or what have you.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And then the other one was on on smart watches. I don't I don't own a smart watch, so I can't speak from firsthand experience, but I can speak from like observing it. And man, they seem pretty distracting to me, too. I know that the people that I see wearing them are constantly checking the notifications and the messages that are on there. So they really do feel like in the class of mobile communication device that would be the sort of thing. And if you're thinking about that we would want to limit during the school day. If you're thinking about like why we would do that, it's not just the distractions, but the, you know, the side channel communication. It's hard to be able to monitor from the adults in the room to ensure that everybody's having healthy, happy conversations. So I feel like they do fit into the same class and I really appreciate trustee Lee's comment about we don't want to have to come and litigate every single device. It's really a characteristic in classes of devices that are doing it as technology changes. This is, I don't know Cecilia, did you want?
I just wanted to say, I I I agree with what David Lee said. I also don't own a smart watch and my kids didn't get watches. I mean, I'm sorry, didn't get phones till eighth grade and freshman year. So when they were in elementary, I was like, I'm dropping you off. I'm picking you off. They shouldn't be a problem, right? And then as far as what we're going to do, I think too is if we want to say we want to trust the students to have them in their backpack. And if they don't, at one point, they're going to probably get collected from the teacher and kept in the office. So hopefully the students would learn that if they want to be trusted with their cell phones, they would keep them in their backpacks if that's the way we want to go. But I I'm I'm fine with and I totally agree with what the policy says. And again, when they're younger, I feel they should be learning in the classroom with no distractions.
When we when we do post the policy, I think Dr. Baker, in the first parent session, you gave them examples of our safety policy. I think that would also help kind of alleviate concerns to know what the school safety situations are.
Correct. And each school has a safety plan. And matter of fact, one of the issues that was brought up, I was at the Spanish speaking meeting and the parent was really concerned in regard to being at after school, your after school and their after school program, and there's an incident that takes place. And not able to get a hold of your child, I go, all right, were you here several years ago when something like that just happened? And I went through that that experience that took place at the school site. And I said, you were here? And she goes, yes, I was. All right. Do you remember? Can you tell me what the district did to inform you and make you aware that your child was safe not to come to school? Don't worry about your child. Once we are allowed to release children, we will notify you in the same fashion. And we did it several times by text, by email, by phone call. We did it during that, I think it was a two and a half hour period, we were notifying parents every thirty minutes. And so the parent was relieved, yes, I remember that. So you can disregard my comment. And we'd have that in place at each of our school sites.
He is building, I think, to the same point. And maybe we're getting ahead of ourselves because I know there's just first readings, such as discussion. But if this were to come into play, it does seem like from the slides and the data, there's a pretty substantial concern over safety and what this caused. So I I imagine, I know it's not exactly policy, but the plan, I think, I think Wendy, you might have mentioned would be to like pretty clearly at first day pack or whatever, make sure that all the families know, hey, this is specifically, one, you know, there's the policy on cellphone, mobile communication devices. Also, two, safety, here's how it's going to be dealt with. So you're aware and here's how we've actually had it play out in the past. Is that right?
That's correct. And plus it's going to be in the welcome back piece two on, so it's going to get out in multiple methods.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up because I I mean, I I strongly support not allowing phones, mobile device, communication devices during the school day. It just seems like a real distraction and can take away. I want to thank Mercedes for presenting the some of the evidence and discussing about that, about the benefits of it. But I do, we should address the concerns that people have around it and make sure that they're heard and that we understand what they are and how the school handles that because they are legitimate concerns that that they have. And we should be, we should acknowledge them and make sure that they're being addressed. The one thing I was I was wondering was originally when I first read the policy over the weekend was sort of, you know, what would we see changes in behavior? Like, is there anything that we're already measuring that we'd be able to catch it, even if it's anecdotal? I know Mercedes spoke about a bunch of those things tonight. So even if we don't have empirical evidence, I'm hoping that next year we'll hear from the principals as we're collecting over the course of the year about what sort of changes they're seeing, either behavior, engagement. Are they getting five days back, ten days, one day, like those kind of things? I think that's that'll be really positive. And the other one is, of course, phones aren't going away or mobile communication devices. So a real success is teaching responsible use as well, not just not just banning. I know that's not part of the policy here or even part of the ARs, but I don't know if something like that could be folded in. I'm not even sure how to consider that or folded in, but it was something that I was thinking about of like, you know, just taking it away is one thing. But really teaching responsible use would be, you know, kind of an even better outcome.
And I think that includes like, what is our preferred stance? Like, what do we think the ideal world looks like in terms of, you know, at what age do we think it's appropriate that somebody gets a phone? When do we think that it's appropriate to nudge parents towards? Have you thought about if you are thinking about getting them a phone for the following set of reasons? Have you considered maybe getting them a smart watch instead, right? And do we put language like that into a policy that the the district is going to try to nudge things in the direction of the best possible outcome for the student?
Yeah, I don't know if that would go into the policy or so, like that's why I was saying, I don't know how this would actually get filled it into what the best thing is. But the one thing I'm pretty certain about is that the for these to be the these commu- phones, smart watches, they're 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 so powerful and invasive in, you know, our daily society that unless there's an externality that's kind of removing them, then it's they're just it's there's such pressure to bring that in.
Just so, and we are that externality.
We are exactly. That's why this is an important policy to do.
Right. And and so just I I think there is a component of parent communication and collective expectation, like this sets expectation for like our area of jurisdiction, which is the school sites, right? But there are things for which we have opinions that we offer guidance to parents around, right? And so where do we put those things where this is the stance of the district? This is our preferred outcome. And yeah, you get to do what you want to do, but if you're looking for advice from the district on what would be best for your kid, like here's here's some material that we have on this.
Yeah, I don't know if we have that. I don't know if anyone's put that together. It's like a, it's kind of like the same thing. Yeah, yeah.
It's common sense media and then also
Common sense media, okay.
Also the information that we all garner from professionals such as Mercedes and others in the field that make recommendations to to almost the pediatricians to parents when they're meeting with them in regarding to mobile devices. My nephew, who's a pediatrician, I know with his stances on it and the recommendations he makes based off of a lot of research and data that they've collected at UCSF. So.
I mean, it really wouldn't surprise me if it ended up into like health curriculum mandated by the state as it gets up and older, how to put it in, like so many other things that come around it, but yeah.
I don't know if I want to speak to this, but there's standards called the ISTI standards and the T is technology. And that does include education for students on say internet safety, other safety, use of technology, some of the harms. So there's all kinds of lessons that are delivered within that, within those standards that the teachers have and they're outlined by grade level, too. So I think it is a nice nod forward with with some of the work, but it's really a partnership. You know, when you have a a family decision on on use of mobile devices in your home, you know, the school is either compatible with those that thinking or possibly against it. I know the first sentence of this board policy, the governing board recognizes student use of smartphones and other mobile communications on device could be harmful and disruptive to the instructional program in some circumstance. I recognize that doesn't, that's not strong about one opinion or another, but it is really speaking about the value of the time during the instructional day and how we want to prioritize, you know, non non tech uses for tech's sake. And I also sort of want to be clear about what we're talking about. Free time using your cellphone and other games or what have you. Possibly using it as a research device, although not needed because we have plenty of devices, laptops, et cetera, in the classroom. At recess, it can come out sneakily with videotaping people. That's a whole nother issue. So when you're asking about data about whether this policy is going to progress forward and what some of our changes will be, we already see data on things surrounding tech devices like this, can be mobile communication. The videotaping for sure is in the disciplinary logs of some schools and and has been in years past. I think things are tightening up, but there's still, it creeps up. Things that are recorded in the bathroom, right? I I put my cellphone in my my pants and I go into the bathroom. Games and sort of antisocial behavior that then has problems with friendships that lead into the classroom. And so these are outside of just the instructional time, some of the other things that we're seeing and have been noted in disciplinary behavior logs and so forth with appropriate consequences and instructional learnings about it. So it could be, let's go back to a common sense media lesson. Let's figure out why that caused harm. Oh, cyber bullying. Let's let's review that. So there's an educational component as well when when things happen. But the goal would be, you know, with tightening it down, better communication, the teachers really, you know, being a little bit more firm than possibly have wiping out the free time with the cellphone piece, you know, five minutes at the end of the day or what have you. Those are all, you know, ways to progress forward and we'll see, you know, as we progress along with our little dipsticks that we're going to have.
I mean, I feel like people could really benefit just from clarity, though. It's like we think as a matter of policy, it's a bad idea for elementary school students to own a cellular phone. Like full stop, like if if, right? And it's just like, we could put that in as a sentence, right? And look, if you if you need location, if you need security, if you need communication, hey, maybe consider getting a smart watch. Don't wear it during the school day. It's disruptive. You know, we don't think it adds to the educational experience. There's a bunch of downsides to it. So we're we're going to have students turn it off and keep it in their backpack. But it'll be there for emergencies and it's there for like pickup and drop off. But for the love of God, don't get your kid a phone, right? I mean, I I I think like we we we're dancing around it in the language here. And if if parents aren't getting clear directive from the district about our expectation for the students' overall educational environment, which includes what happens when they leave our campus, I I I I think they're they're going to give given to defaults. They don't want to be the uncool parent. So I think it would be helpful to give them clarity.
And to that point, this bill, this AB three two one six clearly lays out, it's the governing board's community, community representation of what our community believes is important, which is why the survey was great to see, right? You saw, I think it was over seventy five percent or what have you. Excuse me.
Crystal clear.
Crystal clear, right. I mean, it was firm in in a large percentage. And so that's, you know, like all board policies, but certainly this one, there's sort of this allowance and acceptance for the board to really put their spin on what they think is important to be in this board policy specifically, aside from like a typical C S E A re, C S E, excuse me, C S B A read of of what this of what this is. So it is an opportunity to do that.
Can I just add in, I'm thinking about watches, haven't been at the elementary level and not too long ago being seen at the sites. I think the smart watches really do affect the little ones and we have a lot of little ones that have smart watches. You can see them. You know, they're they're tinier and they're smaller and they're definitely, I've asked several, they're like, what are you doing? I'm playing my game right now. And I'm like, but you're in class. You need to turn that off. So you do see it in the elementary level. As much as this is a distraction for us as adults, but you do, I think our younger kids tend to have them more. I've seen them more and more in the elementary level, little first graders and second graders, even kindergarten have some. I know, I know, but they're still there, right? And it it does cause a shock. And there are parents who can, you know, do those controls so that they're not on during the day. But not everybody does it. I think that's the education part. Parents need to know, how do we turn these off during the day? So that during the school hours, it's not that distraction. And I think we want to educate. That's the way to go. How do we educate and really teach that? Because that's a whole other level, especially for the little ones. Older kids are very savvy and will learn around it. Having had a childhood did that myself, my son. So I know they're very savvy. You know, they learned they don't need the phone. They can use the computer. And they learned to chat on the computer. Our kids are very savvy nowadays. But I do think we have to think about how do we educate the families about if you're going to have a smart watch? How do you turn it off so that the settings during the day are not coming on and children can't don't have access to playing? So not against smart watches, but I do think they're that we have to educate.
All right, should we wrap this up? Any other comments, questions? Okay, one more.
Sorry, very quickly, I just want to say thank you for like all the work that you guys have done in Dr. Baker and Wendy and Mercedes, everyone in the stewardship for this. Because like it's super important, obviously, because we're having this very large discussion about it. The survey data, I know it looks like one slide deck and it's a very small policy, but I clearly there was a lot of work that went into it. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Yeah, I agree. And doing it a year ahead so that we can have a year before implementation has to come in, put it in. I know that we had the policy in place, but tightening it up and really looking at how it's being implemented across the different sites to make sure that we're we're doing the best for our students. So thank you.
I would like some closure on trustee Weekly's comment if we if the board is interested in adding, because that would be something I would need to bring a second reading for next time. Do we want a sort of a firmer statement that represents the survey data where?
Personally, I don't think I could advocate for that at this time. I would want to consider it. I can think of numerous cases where having a phone is beneficial for a student, both in having like, for example, a trace translation app with them. If they need to be able to use it outside of it, or perhaps the language of the policy talks about maybe they need it for their IEP or they're using it for health monitoring because they have, you know, some medical device that's attached to their phone and they need to be able to use it. So I would really would not, I would recommend that we don't try and add that into the policy right now until we have a much longer time to be able to, I would like time to at least be able to research that if we were to go in and say into the policy, something along the lines of for the quote, for the love of God, don't get your child a phone. So
Precise language, I think should be
I I, you know, like, yes, I think that there's generally speaking, like some solid, solid advice in that. But I just don't know that. I think there's a lot of nuance in it that I just don't have the time to be able to consider this evening. I don't know about anybody else.
Same thing. I was gonna say, not necessarily write it on the board policy, but I mean, we could, again, on the first day of school packet or whatever. I mean, at the end of the day, parents are going to want to do whatever they're going to want to do. And at the end of the day, it's going to be whether the phone is going to be in the backpack turned off or put in a pouch. Obviously, they're going to follow the policy, but as far as it's it's almost like the, I don't know, teaching of the parents, that's, I don't see that why that should be written on the policy. So I think it would have to be something more, you know, notification to the parent and then they can decide what they want to do.
Well, I think we kind of already are moving towards a more no phone. That's what we want to go direction. So I think by striking out beneficial, we're already moving in there. Let's see how it goes this year. And then we confirm it up if we if it's not working at the schools.
I think I'm in the same spot. I'm a little bit torn. I'm I'm not against the idea of it eventually, but I'd like trustee Wells, I'd like to get more thought into it of like what that language looks like. Because you're right, like we have responsibility to like advocate for what we believe the actual policy is. I'm not sure I'm clear beyond the scope of like the school site jurisdiction, what that necessarily looks like, but something to revisit.
Like the the, I I just want to thank you all because we didn't have to go forward.
Like the, the, I, I just want to thank you all because we didn't have to go forward with this at this point in time. So this is going to allow us a year to really look at it and then possibly bring it back and tweak again. So, you know, thank you all of you. And Mercedes, thank you so much for being proactive and doing everything you did. I really appreciate it.
Wendy, are you planning on sending out that principal survey like on a regular cadence or kind of what are we gonna be monitoring or?
The actual cell phone survey itself, like we did last time?
Yeah, or we got the feedback from the principals on like how many they had or what their issues were or how it was going.
Yes, no, definitely. So there'll be a few tracking systems that we're gonna look at, certainly the anecdotal, but then the disciplinary logs. Where maybe, and we do have schools that are still rolling it out and they're in their early phases and we expect that. But we do have schools that have been using yonder patches for two years now, like Clifford. So, you know, we have some more experts in that area and it's still not perfect. I think our, our biggest hurdle in those situations with the yonder patches is students actually relinquishing their phone at the beginning of the day. And that, you know, a parent partnership, a stronger parent partnership to sort of support that at home is usually the best course. And then it usually comes with a consequence. So, so tracking that, um, which is what they do already, we'll see with this deeper communication, the extra announcements and rule enforcement at the school sites and the conversations about that and how it, it changes things. Um, and if not, you know, maybe we need to look at other, other means as well. So it'll be nice to, to see how the year progresses.
All right, wrapping up that discussion, we'll move on to our next discussion item, which is eight point four. This is also a first reading discussion of board policy and administrative regulation. This time it's fifty-one, twenty-three, which is on promotion, acceleration and retention.
Yeah, I think we found it a little odd that these three items are lumped together, sort of an interesting, um, way to do it. Part of this board policy update is to reorganize some of the information and make it a little bit more clear. Uh, and certainly the ARs that go with it. Uh, but the other portion of this is to really take a look at um, how we are, how we view essentially retention and the appeal process and how the steps go in the ARs. Um, but also to ensure that the acceleration portion is, is, gives us enough wiggle room and, um, the ability to work within it. Right now, we offer acceleration for math in middle school, starting in sixth grade. But there are conversations about looking at other, uh, content areas and, you know, the finances that go with that, the training that go with that, the, the student groupings and so forth, or some out of the box ideas, right? Independent study, partnering with, you know, potential colleges or other institutions or organizations. And so I'm looking at this like a part one, part two situation. In the fall, there is going to be a group that gets together to look at some of these more unique ways of offering opportunities for students, but we're not quite there yet. So what we did do in the ARs is put clarity in there about the enrichment portion. So that was sort of our one step forward. Knowing that in the fall, we're gonna come back. So this policy will come back to you again next school year. Um, as we tease out and work through some of those things. That's the acceleration portion. Uh, it also includes, uh, the retention portion. I'm gonna rely on Anna Herrera more so, um, uh, in this conversation too. But, uh, the idea of bringing in some of our local assessments that support uh, the, the work that already happens when a student is considered for retention, uh, from in kindergarten, then, but then as the grades progress too. That's very rare. We don't encourage that for lots of reasons. There's you have a whole discussion on that alone. Um, Anna, do you want to add anything else?
Um, I think, you know, I think at the end of the day, we have had some people who, we've gotten submissions about retention and I've turned them all down. Many of them have become, and I think some want to be brought it up in our questions about, um, English learners, right? So we often have time where our newcomers have been retained. Um, and so we have really talked about not doing that as they need time in the, in the country. They need support systems. I think one of the things that we're, we've been working on to really solidify is our M T S S process. What are we doing to identify? Because you can't just retain just because the child didn't make progress. Did they, did you put into play as a teacher interventions around the world? Did he, did the child receive all the support? So we're really trying to make sure we're tracking that a lot better versus just saying, I'm gonna retain this child and no evidence is given. So when they send me the paperwork, I'm always asking, where's their data? Where's the samples? Cause I'm not gonna base it just on a paper. I want to make sure I see the evidence as well. Um, so we haven't retained Dr. Baker and I have talked, we don't both, neither I or him really believe in retention. We believe that we need to intervene. And we need to provide the interventions at the school site as much as we can, um, so that the child can be successful. Um, the thing that's not in here too is that TK and Kinder are two-year program. So if a child is in TK and then goes to Kinder, they actually can't be retained. Cause it's a two-year program of Kinder. So that is a whole other thing. So when I looked at this, I'm like, we didn't put that in there, but that was something that, that the county shared with us that it's a two-year, it's a K K and Kinder, it's a two-year Kinder program. So you really cannot retain a student if they've already been in TK and K, if they've already repeated Kinder twice. Um, so just that you guys know that, you know, and if there's any time to, any time to, it would be in the Kinder area. But as the older grades, it really does get harder to retain students, um, for many reasons, emotionally, socially, emotionally, maturity wise, um, and we definitely don't retain if they have an I E P.
How many students did we retain beyond Kinder in, in the last decade?
Um, well, since I've been superintendent, we have not done one. Uh, the research is out there, the data is out there. You do not, if you're going to retain, it's gotta be.
Kinder.
But beyond that, the research.
Most of this policy work for our policy around retentions beyond Kinder are kind of academic because we don't do it. We're not going to be doing it.
We, we have had, and when Liz, before Anna came in, I think it was Liz's last year, we had a parent that was so disgusted with this. She left the district. I go, it's up to you. It's, it's your call, but we're not retaining the child. The child was in fourth grade.
So this, so this gets actually to something that was a little bit part of the early, you know, prior policy discussion, which is like, uh, how do we, what is the right venue for us to express? Cause the, 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 this is like, um, the language that's in here is like, it, what do we do? How do we handle the case of when we retain a student? Um, that's beyond kindergarten, right? And, and I think the answer is like, we, 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 we don't because it's a really bad idea because the data is crystal clear. Right? And it's like, why doesn't the policy say that? Because when I think about what, what policy is, is policy describes, what is the organization believed to be true? What does the organization think is a good idea at a high level? It's not, it's not the mechanical details, right? That, that's, that, that's why we've got the, uh, the, the administrative regs that are the mechanical details, the policies, the philosophy. It's like, what do we think is true? And it, it's crystal clear. What we think is true is retention beyond kindergarten is a terrible idea. So shouldn't the policy say this district believes that retention beyond kindergarten is a terrible idea? And the ARs can spell out the, how we actually live that.
Yeah, I think it's right.
Question for you guys, because the ed code actually, it's a weird, John and I kept reading the ed code the other day. And in really in the ed code, you can retain and it's like your due diligence. And oftentimes we get, and this is one of the things that private schools and our charter schools do, they retain the kids. And then we get them and they have had no intervention. So there is a lot of practices out there of still retaining kids a lot. And, um, it's really sad to see that when they retain them, they're not retaining them in Kinder. They're retaining them in second and third grade.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, it's do, do, we do, we try to do our due diligence here, but yeah, so this is why we're here. Cause we really want to make sure what is our policy.
And we can review it tomorrow. And I think the last paragraph kind of already leads to that, like what our, what our usual steps are. But we can kind of firm up the wording that we're gonna do this first before any retention, right? All the intervention and the.
Right, which is actually ed code, the very last paragraph on the, on the board policy. Basically says that the district will need to offer an appropriate program of remedial instruction to assist the student in meeting grade level expectations. So however, there is an appeal process, you know, for the, for the parent. But we are meeting tomorrow, so we can look at, so a sentence or two that might.
Yeah, for, you know, for discussion purposes, I'm perfectly fine with adding a sentence. I, I mean, I think this is in my mind, this is different from the last one, um, this is clearly within our purview of like, yeah, we have, i- if we have a sense of what is right, and it sounds like I will acknowledge that I am not as deeply into the academic research as so clearly others are. But if it is the case that like, we know that that, that retention is not often very helpful, then I think there's a perfect place to add a sentence. That's basically like, we strongly discourage retention, except in the most exceptional circumstances. And then if that happens, here's kind of the process. I don't know if others have ideas.
But I think it's great to have that as an introduction into the retention section and put it in there, cause it, it definitely felt achy, um, reading it. So it'd be nice to, yeah, I think it'd be a good start.
Sweet. I mean, I, I, and I, I kind of feel, uh, like on the other side of the fence with acceleration. Um, it's something that not a lot of parents advocate for in terms of like whole grade acceleration is not a very popular thing for parents to do. And for, uh, homeroom teachers, generally they also, uh, don't tend to be big advocates for it. But the data is actually really clear that like net, it ends up overwhelmingly a good thing. Those kids end, that are accelerated and, uh, end up going to, uh, have much higher academic attainment and career success than, than those that don't. So acceleration is unpopular, but highly efficacious and highly supported by data and showing really good outcomes. And this is where I think it would be really helpful if the district, and it could offer a nudge to say like, i- if it seems like you have kids who are academically outperforming and may be ready to go and skip a grade, we should lean into exploring that with kids, even taking parents along for the journey, uh, for why it may be a good idea for them. Because the acceleration is, a whole grade acceleration has also been somewhat rare in this district is my understanding. Like this last school year, how, how many, um, how many kids did we grade skip?
We didn't, we didn't.
None.
We didn't. But we have looked at children coming into the district, especially at kindergarten, who have had, um, additional experiences who are, we are beyond the kindergarten grade level. And after we've done some testing and also we had our psychologists work with them, it was determined that yes, they should be in first grade and not in kindergarten. So we have done that. And matter of fact, Don and I were talking about a student who's coming into TK and the parent feels very strongly that this child should be in Kinder. And so what we said, okay, your child turns four isn't in December, in this, on December, let's start there. And then we're gonna start, then we're gonna test. It gives us time to see maturity in action. And then we're gonna test. And if it's true, then we'll have to, let's discuss.
Sure. And I feel like with the number of students, we have more than six thousand students, the, the odds that zero percent of the kids who um, were in a prior year with us, were ready to jump a year. Um, seems much lower than I would expect, you know, I, I, I would expect somewhere between like two to, something in the two percent range, maybe we could say, um, you know, and, and based on some of the data I've seen around acceleration. Um, and with the quantity we have, it's statistically significant enough that I would expect like a couple dozens of kids in the district to be, to be grade skipping every year. And the fact that it's zero is like, we're, I think as a matter of policy, because this is a policy discussion that we're having right now, under promoting acceleration as a very helpful and efficacious proven technique for long-term academic performance and investing in kids. So it's just, it, I'm not seeing a lot of nods around the, around the table. Um, it's an area where I, I would like us as a board to explore more and to learn more because I acknowledge it's, it's not popular, but it's highly effective. And it's something that I would like to see us collectively lean more into.
I would like to see more research on myself.
Yeah.
Um, on it. And I also want to see the research on those students who have gone in that direction and have suffered. And then we have this discussion because there is, there are studies that children have skipped one, two grade levels. And by a certain time they're at middle school or high school, it goes the other direction. So I would really like to balance the both before we determine that we're going to do this.
Let's lean into doing the research and seeing what's out there. Cause I, I, I think, I think our community deserves that. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm similar. I think I'm the same boat as Dr. Baker. We're open, for sure, open to the research. Like we should just know what the answer is. Uh, for just, I think intuitively, it feels a little bit different because there's a more, I, I feel like there's a more obvious perniciousness of the retention, um, than there is necessarily promotion or, you know, beneficial qualities to acceleration, just because it's, uh, I think there are also emotional components to it that change over the elementary, middle, high school lifetime, that I do wonder if there are different dynamics. And I, I just don't know what the answer is. But I feel like retention, it's just all stigma, um, which seems like an easier answer, but I'd be curious about the research as well.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know anything about grade skipping or putting along those lines, totally unfamiliar with it. Um, haven't, haven't seen anything talking about pros or cons for it. Um, and I don't know, um, so.
So what's the right way to ask for a study session, for us to go and pull in some research, pull in some data and see what we want our policy? Cause this is a policy discussion. We're having a policy discussion about acceleration. It'd be nice to have our policy be grounded in data. Um, and so I, I, this is my formal request that we, we bring together some data to go and review to figure out what our board policy on acceleration should be.
Yeah, I think that, um, what might be nicest to get a little bit of individual research to pull in there, um, there, cause there, the one thing I will say is that, you know, if we're not deliberate about what we want to do study sessions on, and this may be the important one that we want to do. But if, you know, at every, every board meeting, we're like, hey, there's a study session here or a study session there, we're gonna end up missing the ones that are prioritized. So I would kind of like to have a way for, and I don't know exactly how this is gonna work. Maybe it can be our August offsite where we can put it in and say, what are the topics where we feel like we should be able to put in the, the study session? Cause otherwise, um, we're either gonna have so many study sessions that we're not studying anything, or we're studying the wrong stuff because it's not the ones that we like it. I do, I do think it's interesting and I encourage us all to go and get, you know, educated on our own and also bring it up with, uh, with the superintendent. And if we do start finding things that look really interesting, let's bring it into, you know, kind of the prioritization of what do we think as the board? Um, we want to be able to, to study, you know, where we want to spend our time and, and study for it. I, I do, you know, I think that this is something that could impact a few students. Um, and I don't know if that's, you know, if that's the one that's gonna make it to the very top of our list of, hey, these are the things that are gonna affect, you know, fifteen hundred students or two thousand students and be able to pull it together, the grade skipping one particularly.
Sure. It's just if, if it's something that we did decide to do, it's actually incredibly cost-effective intervention because we, we get the student for a year less, right? And so it just bang, bang for the buck is, sorry, the, the return on investment that we get for that is, is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm just saying that like, I think that we should kind of educate ourselves a little bit and then see if we can bring it into a prioritization framework, which I admit we don't have for study sessions. And we should probably start putting one together and finding a way to bring this in. We brought this up before with some of the other items that we wanted to discuss.
So do we have meta question? Do we have a parking lot where we are tracking? Here are the things that we need to have study sessions on.
I think you have the parking lot.
Do I? All right.
We, um. I, I have some of them written down. I don't have them in front of me now that have come up before in the past, um, that we said, hey, let's bring it to, and figure out where we want to put it. Um, but I, I will fully admit that I haven't been rigorous about like, hey, let's collect them all. And then we can come in and do like a detailed rubric evaluation and things like that, which, which, you know, historically we haven't done as a board. Um, and so it might be, you know, that's something that we want to do and bring it in. But I think it should be board led, um, not, not with staff input, of course, but I don't, I wouldn't look to the staff to say like, hey, obviously I think you should come to us and say, you guys need to study this. This is an important thing. Um, but I think that these additional ones, um, we should figure out what those are, what we want to prioritize. And then the discussion should be, how many items do we want to take on in, you know, in a board year, uh, pull that stuff together.
Can I add one more item? So grade skipping isn't a new concept for our district. I mean, even when I was former North Star principal, we had about two kids every year that would pass a end of year post-assessment to measure end of year knowledge at the beginning of the year and would score at least a ninety percent. That is, you know, check, my goodness, that person really knows it. Let's move on. And there, there was a relationship with Sequoia, certainly for math. We had a science program online back in the day, that type of thing. Um, similar to your other question about retention, how many parents are actually requesting grade skipping? Do you know, Anna?
We have one right now for next year.
One. Okay, now, okay.
Do we have? Yeah.
Yeah. Um, course skipping might be interesting. There is a domino effect in middle school. Yeah. Um, course skipping might be interesting. There is a domino effect in middle school about this though, because the way the courses are laid out, you would literally need to know an entire year of something before you, and a whole different subject. Right? So you, you know, more earth science, biology, science, physical science. So somewhat similar to that. And they weave and ebb and flow. So middle school has become a little bit different with Common Core. But, you know, it's, I mean, I'm a big fan of enrichment and opportunities for kids to stretch themselves and challenge themselves, just in my background and work. However, it is a systematic process. It involves staffing, it involves funding, it involves bandwidth. There are more simple opportunities, which is some of the things we were looking at exploring next year for some unique and usual situations. Or in addition to, you know, that also is another option for kids too. So I think there's a lot to explore. I was going to say, I'm also very interested in the research that you have because there is a lot of things out there that lead to an interest in really challenging students in school and what that means for every student, quite frankly, but certainly kids that are seeking and wanting more. So anyway, I appreciate the conversation tonight. Our board policy committee is going to look at some of the sentences too, to, to look for some strength in there. So thank you for that.
Just two more things. And one that you brought to my mind because I did not, this did not, it was not immediately intuitive to me until we had lots of conversation about this, but that there is a distinction between, I guess, terminology of accelerated, course acceleration, grade acceleration, and then enrichment. And so whereas I am currently ambivalent on the acceleration piece, I am happily also to make a policy statement that says like, we very much encourage enrichment as appropriate. Because my understanding is like, that is a lot of, uh, what North Star, for example, will do, uh, to enrich the existing curriculum, to make it more fuller, deeper dive into things. And that seems appropriate when that's the, the capacity is available, which I think is a less, less of a jump than, um, acceleration.
We believe every student should be challenged to the full limits of their capabilities.
I, I, I certainly believe that. I don't.
Great. Maybe, maybe that could be a statement of policy, right? And we can find different ways to enact that policy.
The other thing was I just wanted to make sure, because this is obviously a policy discussion among the full board, but wanted to invite trustee Marquez or trustee King to opine on any of this.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I mean, I, I, I think I would also want to add that enrichment piece. And we did, it's not obvious in this red line, but we did add the word strength because we wanted to, that wasn't even in the policy before. So we are going to try to focus on that piece when we update the wording.
Cecilia, did you have anything to add?
No, the only thing is, um, with acceleration, obviously I don't know much other than you guys said that there might be a parent, but do we want to take in what the parent says versus what the teacher sees? Because as a parent, you could think, okay, you know, my, my child is ex, you know, smart. But what the teacher actually sees on a daily basis, it could be that they're lacking something. So at the end of the day, when it comes down to if there's going to be any acceleration, then how do we, how would we weigh that in? Um, it would be more of a teacher recommendation, which it sounds like we're, we don't do. Um, or again, the intervention. My question with intervention is, are we talking about intervention? Like maybe the pullout method or the, what do you call it?
Push in.
So what do we? What, what are we doing, um, as far as intervention?
For retention or for all different, so there, there's different types. Most, most of them are done by pullout, pullout. Yeah. But I also know that, for example, at Roy Cloud, a couple of years ago, Ms. Bowden had a student who needed, it was TK and was definitely a grade level, needed advancement. So the teacher who was interventionist actually was supporting that child. So that was a pullout program to help that child continue learning, but still because the child socially was having a lot of issues, but academically was on target. So there, there was the social aspect and then there was the academic. So she was able to do that with that child. So she had someone available to do that. But we often don't see that in, in with like a student who's ready to accelerate, you know, go ahead or move forward. We look at, I mean, we don't have it in place. We do have test scores. We do all, all but have the data, just like what we would, we would need to do to create something to help support that child or those children. We don't have the system in place right now. But if it's something that the board wants us to give direction, I think it's, it, we do have to actually work with the teachers too, because again, it's a philosophy, you know? It's a change of philosophy of what we've been doing in practices.
I had one more item. This, this policy says promotion, acceleration, retention, but I, I, I really just want to make sure that we are truly talking about grade skipping or course skipping and the concept of acceleration. Because there are very different ways to meet the needs of high achieving students. Deep enrichment is one of them where you still work within the grade level standards for the student, but you go much deeper. You allow that child to really explore, research, show interest, create projects and information because their surface knowledge is enough to sort of get by so that you can allow them time to go deeper in various subjects. And then there might be other pieces where they actually need direct instruction, like, you know, like when you, when you grade skip, you are saying that the child is accelerated in all four core subjects at the same time. Which is unique and rare, to be honest. If you have a student pass a post-assessment, it's not impossible. A post-assessment at the end of the year, perhaps in math, they might excel, perhaps in English, language arts, including writing, they may excel, but it's very unique to see all four subjects in one child. So that's why the idea of enrichment or course skipping is a little bit more attractive. Because you can still keep kids with their peers. There's ramifications in middle school and high school for those decisions. Socially, developmentally, on a maturity level. So the idea of enrichment is still really challenging the kids in, in a, in a good, healthy, productive way with keeping some of those developmental pieces intact as they progress over the years. Cause it's not so much you see it in kindergarten. Everyone's like, oh, they can read, but it's really when you, when they start getting into middle and high school, where you start seeing the ramifications, good, bad, and ugly of that decision. So enrich, a deep dive of enrichment is sort of a, a middle ground to manage all of the elements that unfold as a result of those earlier decisions usually that parents make for that. So something to think about, um, as we progress. Cause that was one of my first questions to the committee. Are we talking about enrichment? Are we talking about acceleration? Those are two very different pieces, but enrichment's not listed in this title at all.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I do want to talk about that course acceleration a little bit, but before we do that, um, I think the beginning conversation was, was about grade changes. I think you were talking about skipping a grade or I think, of course, we started with retaining, um, retention of grade. But I think that's what we were talking about. I don't think aside from what, uh, trustee Lee brought up around like, hey, enrichment and supporting that, um, I don't think we've gotten into that conversation yet. Does that?
At an even higher level, I was seeing some nods around every student should be challenged to the full extent of their capabilities. And then we can talk about some of these different mechanisms like enrichment, like course, grade skipping, like full grade skipping, um, as different mechanisms of action to enact that.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, I think accelerated courses, um, like the math pathway in middle school or, or other options there are, are, you know, they're interesting and they provide unique opportunities. The thing that always worries me about them is the ridge, if they become rigid tracking with hard gates in it. Um, and this policy does talk about state test as the admission for those classes. And it just, it feels like a lot to put that on a high stakes test, um, particularly for, you know, a student that might have, you know, a bad day on that one test day, or maybe they're, um, you know, they're emerging bilingual student. And so there's language stuff, but it's not knowledge problems. How does, should the policy address that? I mean, how is that addressed? How is that addressed today to ensure that, as, let's take the math, for example, in middle school, that as many students as possible can get into the advanced math so that they can benefit from it. Because I do think that that's a case where the more students that get into it, the more students benefit from it. Um, and so it does feel like something that should be expansively offered. I know they've done this similar things at the high school level around AP courses where the more students that get into AP courses, the more students that get four or fives on the AP. Um, and so sure, you know, but, uh, and so I think, I just wanted to make sure there aren't hard gates. There's not things that are exclusionary on, and how we handle that today.
It, it, it's a little different between an elementary district and a high school different because there's different units or credits and you know, there's, there are different elements. Sort of our responsibility and really the high schools, but our responsibility is to ensure that all students are meeting the grade level standards at a minimum, right? But there are no units or credits. And this is why it's a different philosophy of promotion than you see at the high school graduation, for example. And, and failure in the high school versus, um, other acceptable means. So there's a little bit of different nuance for that. But there's also an always has been, and feel free Anna to pipe in here. A, a concern in general of our multilingual learners that need to access language within math word problems. I mean, aside from the language arts portions, right, that are a little more evident, but there is a lot of language in Common Core math. And so those, those are already obstacles that the teachers need to work with and through, through their ELD strategies and other methods to have students obtaining and gain access to the understanding. We have a lot of brilliant students that can understand math concepts, but the nuances within Common Core require a level of academic language. And so that is the work that's being done in the classroom. So that's not to say students would necessarily, that it would be a barrier, but, um, they would need to be able to perform on some sort of indicator to know that they were, are ready for that additional challenge. Because usually in acceleration classes, they can also be more fast paced. So it's not, it's not a deal breaker by any stretch, but those are elements to think about. And, and quite frankly, the, the bigger worry is work habit. Work habits for students when they're, um, taking acceleration classes, needing to balance it out, having to turn things in, you know, the rapid pace and so forth. So there's other elements as well that can be barriers too. And because of that developmental difference in these ages, when these kids are growing and developmentally changing so fast. Not to say that they don't do that in high school, but it's a slower rate. Did you want to add, Anna? Okay, okay.
I, I think Mike, what you're asking also is in regard to our multilingual students, and we do have multilingual students who definitely, we give them that opportunity to accelerate, especially in the math piece. So as Wendy was, was indicating that, um, there could be a barrier with the language and the reading. So there is, there are tools out there right now that, you know, will read to them exactly what you, you, what they need to do. And then they're able to do it because we've seen these kids at Hoover that, that was a barrier, but we fixed that barrier because we brought in the device that can help them.
Yeah. And I know that, you know, over the past several years, you've done a great job of expanding the accelerated math to all of the middle schools. So that, you know, uh, every student in the district has the opportunity at their school site, um, to be able to participate in those advanced classes. You know, just trying to make sure that those remain opportunities that as many students as possible can, particularly ones that, you know, may not score as well on the state test. Do they have other opportunities to be able to get into those programs? So that it's not a rigid, rigid program with rigid gate with no alternative ways in.
And, and, and in our classroom visits, you know, Anna even said, um, there's, these kids need to be in the advanced math. They should not be here. Of course they were, um, with us maybe a, a year or so, or even recent arrivals. But they need to get into the advanced class and not be in this class. And we, and they're fine, but we have the other support systems in place.
Right. Cause if it's, you know, if it is language, academic language, um, you know, maybe their wind block or whatever it is the week before introduces that vocabulary. So that when the material starts to be taught, they've already familiar with whatever that academic language is, um, and can be able to get to it. So. And then, uh, Jennifer had mentioned adding strengths into the board policy and teaching to, to student strengths. But I noticed that like some of the old language talked about academic deficiencies. And I was just wondering if, um, people would be amenable to changing it to like more asset-based language around like opportunities for growth, opportunities to meet their strengths or, or something along those lines. I think there's one in the board policy and one in the AR. It wasn't like it was, you know, everywhere else, but like areas for growth or something like that, just more asset-based. No objections?
No, no objections from me.
All right, cool. Um, yeah, those were kind of like my two, two top line comments. Any other, uh, any other discussion items here? All right. We have discussed. Let's move on to the.
Thank you. I feel, you know, so often I feel like a lot of the things that we do are sort of mechanical and we don't actually get to discuss matters of policy, like what do we want to be when we grow up? And like that, that, that actually was a discussion like that, which is great.
No, that's fair. That's fair. There's, there's some things are, you know, they're just requirements and don't, don't worry. There's plenty more agenda ahead of us. Where we will do things that are, you know, just we have to go through, we have to do it. Um, it's part of the job, but there are parts where it's like, there are meaty, interesting things to discuss. And yeah, I, I'm glad that we took advantage of it. So yes, thank you everyone for participating and engaging with the topics. I think that these are important ones. Yeah. Okay. Well, now we have the consent items, uh, and we're going to approve all 14 in a single vote. So can I get a motion?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Perfect. Okay. Now we are on to action items. Um, this is 10.1 and it's the approval of the RCIA proposal.
So these three action items coming to you tonight regarding, um, proposals. This first one is for the administrators, the management group within the Redwood City School District, not a union, but a group that comes together to be considered. So are there any questions regarding the proposal or the increases in compensation?
Questions, comments, um, anyone have concerns? I think we've, uh, we've, you've kept us updated through the whole process. So I don't think that any of these are new to us. Okay. Then I think we can go ahead and move to approve. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the RCA proposal.
Seconded. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We'll move on to 10.2. This is for our CTA, the tentative agreement.
We had a very productive, um, four in-person meeting sessions with our CTA to review the contract, which expires in 2026. So we were negotiating for 25, 26, as you know. And this tentative agreement addresses compensation, but other contract language that needed to be updated. The next contract, um, negotiations will actually be the successor agreements. That's a three-year period. We open up all the articles. But for this one, as you noticed, there's only a handful that are open to from each side of the table and then compensation for both groups. So are there any questions regarding our CTA's ratified, um, and the, they ratified, and then also the tentative agreement?
Questions, comments? Now again, we've, we've been kept along through this. So thank you for the updates, um, to keep us up to date. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
And is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, and the last is the tentative agreement, uh, with CSEA.
And once again, we met with CSEA for five, um, meetings, four in person and one agreed upon remote one. And it was really productive. We talked through different issues and different concerns in order to make the betterment of, um, the work environment for employees. And some good conversations, some that will need to continue into the future. Because we're inching towards progress and, and so forth. But in general, it, it was nice to have conversations back and forth and really understand each other's points of view on the various topics at hand. And I also do want to thank at this, at this time, Rick, who is our partner at the table. We have two administrators for both unions that come and meet and our attorney. So we all, it was a good effort, um, from the district's part. And in CSEA's case, they have representatives from different classifications. So it's a larger group, which is nice. Because there's viewpoints from the different classifications. So this tentative agreement really represents the work over this session.
So you want to have questions or comments? No. Okay. And then I will just echo, uh, your appreciation there, Wendy. Um, thank you to the district staff. And of course to our bargaining units, um, and our staff members that make up the executive team, uh, for their bargaining units for the work that's gone on. I know this is not classroom time, but it's an important thing to be able to do. So I appreciate everyone's effort.
And thank you to the board for the consistent support of the union groups and the comments that are made.
Yeah. Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Okay, last one. Uh, this is the year-end budget transfers. As the name says, it's, we do this every year at the end for budget transfers. Rick, do you want to just give a preamble for it?
Sure, I just want to make sure we are grounded in a mechanical item to end the meeting tonight. A, a, a standard yearly occurrence, uh, allowing us to transfer um, balances to pay obligations. Uh, we shouldn't have to use it much, but in case we need to, um, we have the authorization, so without, I'll hand it back to the board.
Does anyone have questions or comments for Rick? Okay, then can I get a motion to approve?
I move we approve this mechanical.
And is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, we're on to board and superintendent reports. Who wants to start? Pick wisely, because we'll just rotate around from there, so. All right, trustee Lee is sitting down there. If I, at the end, you're gonna start and we're gonna just move around.
Like many of us, uh, did the circuit of the promotion ceremonies, uh, North Star, Clifford, and Taft. It was great to see, great to see all the different communities and. All the different flavors of um, of each school site, and it was great to see everyone in celebration together.
Did we also have um, our, I'm forgetting, did we also have our health and wellness meeting? Or was that? Um, I was at uh, MIT, um, and then I was at Adelante for Principal Warren's retirement. That was nice. And then we also had, uh, I also had, um, I was at Ford. That was nice for fifth graders.
Cecilia?
Yeah.
Um, I attended the um, Kennedy's mural celebration. That was very nice. Um, it was beautiful. I mean, everyone that spoke from the teacher that I was so impressive to see her with this baby and. You know, a little pouch, and she was talking um, about all the great um, students are at Kennedy. They performed the. They did a part of the play, I guess. I wasn't, I was towards the end, so I didn't really hear what they were. It, it was a group of students, but I think it was part of, whether it was part of the play or a play.
Um. It was from the drama program, that, that's not that, the drama elective.
Okay.
Perform, yeah.
There, thanks. Um, so it was really nice, and obviously the mural, it's just fabulous, and obviously all the students that put their um, efforts into. Helping bring color to it. Um. I attended the. Last Spanish Superintendent Advisory Committee. Um, the ladies actually got a certificate and they're very gracious. One of them is moving on to the high school, and so. We're gonna be sad to see her go, and hopefully they will have, their homework is to bring at least two more parents next year to um, be part of this. Um, I also came to the retirement reception. And um, went to the Hoover and the Kennedy um, graduations. And that's it.
All right, um, we had uh, the two by two by two. That's the first one that we've ever been to. Um, so that's uh. David Lee and I and Dr. Baker, um, two trustees from the Sequoia Union High School District and two uh, council members. Um, the chief of police shared their plans for having community liaison officers. It's not final yet, but they're bringing community liaison officers to the high school. Um, Dr. Baker gave updates from Redwood City School District, and then we heard some updates from the Sequoia Union. It was about an hour. Uh, yeah, also went to graduations, uh, and it is really neat to see how different each one is. Um, the personalities that the principals bring to it, the communities bring to it and everything that's there, um, Garfield, Roosevelt, Roy Cloud and Orion. Also. Having gone to just the fifth grade promotions for a while, then, then suddenly showing up to middle school, you're like, oh, man, they're so much older, you know, so. You know, it's a, yeah, yeah, it's remarkable. I was at uh, the mural celebration with Cecilia. I'd forgotten about that and the staff retirement celebration. And then the one thing that I wanted to report on is that I think we have all our paperwork in to be able to do the board self-evaluation. Um, so that should be coming in. Thank you, Evelyn, for your help and for, for getting that all finalized. Um, the, that should be coming via email to us all, starting on the sixteenth. For like a two to, two week window or so to be able to fill it out. Haven't done it before, don't know what's gonna be in it. Um, but just look at it in your email, uh, and I just wanted to share that now that, that uh, that, that'll be coming, um. I guess that's Monday, the sixteenth.
Is that self-evaluation going to be for open discussion at a, one of the sessions in June?
We will do it at our offsite in August. Uh, we'll have a session there, yeah. So we're doing it now. Um, originally I had intended for the timeline to be to do the evaluation in June, but then it made sense to just kind of do it in an offsite. Um, and so, yeah, it'll sit there for a while, uh, and this is run by CSBA. They'll do an evaluation and a plan and sort of, um, we'll see. And we can evaluate the evaluation and see if we think that it's a helpful tool that, that's useful for us, and I think you'll get one too, yeah.
And also remember that uh, the offsite is an open, it's open, it's not a closed meeting, so. Um, attended many of the same uh, events that many of you have attended. Uh, the promotion, the graduations were just a lot of fun, just, just fantastic. Uh, Hoover's was really quite large, and you knew so many people there. From being, you know, within the community, so um, Lupa did a great job. Her, her students were amazing, the people that spoke. And then uh, with Warren, I promised I was not going to, you know, roast him or anything, and I didn't. Um, but you know, we really just wanted to, I wanted to acknowledge him there with the kids and the parents, you know, of his, you know, eleven years being, you know. Administrator at that school site, and now he's on his way, so, but it was great, it's great times. No hot, well, some of you got in the really, in the heat, right? There was the, yeah, yeah, hottest, yeah.
Uh, you don't know. You honestly, you have no idea. This was, this was warm. Uh, there have been times where it's like, clearly like almost a hundred, you're in the sun, and it's just. This was very comfortable.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyone have correspondence to share?
I guess there's my own correspondence, but I, I, for giggles, went and wrote a uh. Scraper that goes and pulls down all of our district's policies, because we don't actually have them in machine readable format. They're published and you can download PDFs, and so I. Wrote some open source software that goes and breaks that apart, um, and then uses AI to go and analyze each one of the policies and see if I can. Um, find if there were any issues. Um, found a couple of small nits that I sent onward uh, to the board and to uh, Dr. Baker. And then later to Wendy and Jolene per Jennifer's suggestion. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna uh, see if this goes anywhere with being able to help us uh, get an extra set of eyes just on these policies and look for opportunities for. Uh, improvement, look for opportunities to align it with uh, California Ed Code. Um, it is open source. If anyone's interested in checking it out, it's on GitHub uh, under Dweekly slash RCSD hyphen policy. Um, so if anyone wants to take a look at the source code and analysis that uh, I did. And build on that, because now it's uh, you can do your own experiments on a machine readable corpus of the district's policies, so, cool.
Fun, thanks for sharing. Anyone to have more correspondence? No? Okay. Um, possible other business suggested items. I know we had one earlier to add to our list of um, study session.
The parking lot that I'm apparently maintaining.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Any other? No, okay, we've gone, changed the, I don't know, are there any changes? There's only two more, so.
No changes.
Okay, no, no changes to the remaining few of the board.
Are there other things I should put in the parking lot that occur to people?
Um, well, you had an email at one point where you had a list of items. Yeah, those are the ones that I think should go in there, yeah. Cool, um, I think that's it. Uh, let's make him, uh, we're at the adjournment. Would someone like?
I move the adjourn.
Return, yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, meeting's adjourned.